Good evening. We'll call this meeting to order for the September 8th, 2022 Apple Valley City Council Meeting. I'd like to start off with a, with a welcome for our both our in-person and our virtual audiences this evening. For our in-person attendees, when your name is called, please approach the podium to address the council. For our virtual attendees during the meeting, if you have questions or comments for the audience participation portion of the meeting, please press the raise hand symbol and the meeting organizer will notify us that you'd like to speak. With that, the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask everyone to rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The second item on our agenda this evening is to approve the agenda. And Tom, do we have any changes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. No changes to tonight's agenda.
We have no changes, so I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion from Grendel and a second from Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda carries. Next item on the agenda is on the audience participation portion of the meeting. This is for items not on the regular agenda. And we have a total of 10 minutes for this section. Meeting organizer, are there any questions or comments from the virtual audience?
Mayor, there are no members of the online audience wishing to speak.
Thank you. And I did not see anyone signed up. And do we have anyone in the impersonal audience who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will close the audience participation portion of the meeting. And we'll move on to consent agenda. These items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or a citizen requests to pull an item. Council members, are there any items you would like to pull? Seeing none, from our virtual audience, are there any items to be pulled?
Mayor, there are no audience members wishing to pull anything.
Thank you. And do we have anyone in the room who would like to pull an item? Seeing none, we would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Melander and a second by Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The consent agenda carries. First item on our regular agenda is item 5A, and that is to adopt a resolution accepting a donation from the Deutsch Family Wine and Spirits for use by the Fire Department. And Chief Russell has this item for us.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us up to adopt the resolution to accept the donation. I'm going to ask Katie Stenson from Deutsch Family Wine Spirits to come up along with me to talk a little bit about what we're doing tonight. So Joseph Carr is the founder and winemaker with Josh Sellers. And along in partnership with the Deutsch Family Wine and Spirits offered to donate $1,000 to the Apple Valley Fire Department. We'll use it towards a fire prevention program. And I'd like to go ahead and read the resolution. And I'm going to have Katie talk a little bit about the nice work that Joseph Carr actually does with the National Volunteer Fire Council.
Go ahead.
So a resolution accepting donation whereas the City Council of Apple Valley encourages public donations to help defray the costs of the general public in providing services in Apple Valley. And whereas Joseph Carr, founder and renowned winemaker from Josh Sellers, in partnership with Deutsch Family Wine and Spirits, have offered to donate $1,000 for the use by the Apple Valley Fire Department. And whereas Minnesota statutes 456.03 requires that all gifts and donations of real or personal property be accepted only with the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of the members of the city council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, that the donation being provided through Deutsch Family Wine and Spirits is hereby accepted for use by the city. Be it further resolved that this city sincerely thanks Joseph Carr in partnership with Deutsch Family Wine and Spirits for the gracious and generous donation adopted this 8th day of September 2022.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion from Bergman and a second from Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that carries. Thank you for the donation. And please, I think you have a few words for us.
Sure. I just wanted to thank you guys for having me here tonight. Joseph Carr was supposed to be here two weeks ago to do this in person, but was unable to make it to Minnesota. So you guys get me instead. Joseph Carr is an actual person. I don't know if you guys have heard of Josh Sellers before, but he founded the brand in honor of his father, who was named Josh, and he was a volunteer firefighter. So every year, he makes a limited edition pack on his Lodi Cabernet and donates a dollar per bottle to the National Volunteer Firefighter Council. So this year, we partnered locally with Apple Valley. We wanted to keep this program in Minnesota as well. So nationally, a dollar per bottle gets donated. And then we match that dollar locally and partner with Apple Valley Liquor and the Apple Valley Fire Department to make that donation.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Thanks for having me.
That's right, Bergman.
I just had a bottle of your Prosecco the other night.
Fantastic.
For a 25th wedding anniversary.
Oh, I'm glad you enjoyed it.
So yeah, it's very good.
Good.
Very good vineyard. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to item 5B. And we have an awful lot of Ron this evening, but it's always exciting. So 5B is our proposed 2023 city budget and property tax levy. And Ron, we'll just turn the show over to you from here on.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And those viewing from home and in person, we usually don't have this big of a crowd, which is good to see. What we're doing this evening is the city council is being asked to adopt the preliminary budget and preliminary tax levy for the coming year, 2023. This will set the maximum levy that the city can levy come December. And it can be lowered at any time up through December, but cannot be increased. The levy amount that we certify to the county in September is the levy amount that they will use to prepare the truth and taxation notices, the estimate of property taxes payable in the coming year that is mailed out to each of the residents, each of the property owners in November. So what we set this evening is what is used for that calculation. And the other action is to set a date for, it used to be called the truth and taxation hearing. It's now just a public meeting where we invite the public to come. And that is the notice that they will receive in November, inviting them with the date and time. And we're recommending December 8th, 2022, which is a regularly scheduled council meeting. The next item is the insert that would go in with that. And we'll have a little more information on that. Some of the updates since the July informal meeting, we did receive our fiscal disparities amounts. This resulted in a $6 decrease in the amount of the increase. So the increase for the coming year in the city portion of the taxes approximately $110. Back in July, it was $116. So it's still an increase, but it has been reduced. And of course, that'll update a number of pages throughout the document, which I distributed last week for the council to put in their books. I do have full books if anybody is interested in a full new copy, fresh copy. And then there's an update to some summary pages for the enterprise funds that carried forward the incorrect amounts. So those summary pages are also included. I mentioned the truth and taxation notice that'll be going out this fall. There is a new countywide budget summary of all jurisdictions that the county is required to have a one-page summary of the county, the city, and all the school district information on one page. And the next item, 5C, then, we'll take a little bit closer look at that as well. One of the things that we talk about each year during the budget process, the city council has seen much of this information already. So it'll be kind of, let's call it a refresher for the city council, but potentially new information for those watching from home. Our overall property tax values are increasing 16.3% from 6.6 billion to $7.7 billion for taxes payable in 2023. We can see that the, in this table, we break out the new construction value that's added, and then just the appreciation in existing properties. And we can see that we added $21 million worth of new construction, but appreciation over the past year is over $1 billion in appreciation. So that really is where the 16.3%. One of the important pieces of information to see in this is the increase in residential property of 18.2% and also apartments of 15.9% is far greater than the commercial, industrial, and utility property valuations. And we'll see in a minute that will result in a shift of the property tax burden to residential and apartment property classes. I mentioned the valuation. This takes a look at the tax capacity. So this is, we'll have a calculation in a little bit, but this is the tax base that is added in new construction. We can see that residential added 0.28%. Commercial, industrial added 0.57% to their property class. Agricultural didn't have any new construction, of course. And then apartments, 0.63% of new construction value added. And when we look at the valuation or the appreciation, so it'd be the change in the value other than new construction. We can see the residential 18.57% of tax base was added with appreciation for the coming year, as well as apartments, 13.5%. And we see a decline in agricultural property. That's just the development of agricultural property. And commercial, industrial, a little less than 1% growth in appreciation. So these combined, these tables will result in a shift of some of the property tax burden to the residential and apartment property classifications for the coming year. Our valuation, median value home, well, one of the updates, didn't make it on this chart, should be $352,800. It dropped $200 since July, but still, it's the highest it's been since, well, 2008 was our prior peak. So it certainly has been going up. And we see a dramatic spike from 22 to 23. We look at the total budget, the city of Apple Valley, our total budget includes not just the enterprise funds, or the general fund and the enterprise funds, and we include other funds. We look at the total budget citywide, $88.6 million. We are, the city is a service provider, personal services, wages, and benefits makes up 35% of our total expenditure budget for the coming year. Items for resale, that we operate the liquor store and enterprise funds, we purchased 8.2% or 8.2 million of purchases that are used in the businesses. And then we have capital outlay depreciation, 22 million. So that's another significant portion of our budget is just related to capital. And then debt service, 1.4 million. Transfers and admin fees between funds and programs, 7.8 million. And then everything else, and that's from supplies to fuel to everything else we purchase would make up the other 20% or approximately $17 million. We look at it in a different way. In the fund type, I mentioned the general fund. The general fund makes up 46% of our total budget of the funds that we budget. Enterprise fund is approximately 38% or 34 million. For this graph, I broke out, break out the road fund just to show that 8% of our budget goes to supporting the road, street, and infrastructure replacement program. And then all other funds, we do have a number of capital project funds and special revenue funds that we also budget, a total just over 7 million, approximately 8% of the total expenditure budget. On the revenue side, user and franchise fees, I mentioned we have the enterprise funds, water, sewer, stormwater funds. We also have the liquor store that would all run into, roll up into user fees, 34.3 million or 41% of the total citywide budget. Property taxes makes up 36% of the total budget, just over 30 million, 82,000. Intergovernmental revenue, we do receive some intergovernmental revenue. Most of it is related to municipal state aid and federal state aid that we're applying to capital projects. Licenses and permits, 1.9 million. And then transfers, we have the expenditure side. Now this is the revenue side. And again, this is just for the budgeted funds of 10.1 million, approximately 12%. And then everything else makes up 1.3 million. Of the, all the funds, one of the main focuses this evening is property taxes, and that's the 36% of the total overall budget, 30 million, 82,000. And the general fund, since we're talking property taxes, of the general fund, 40 million, 432,000. Personal services, wages and benefits, we are a service provider, makes up 25.6 million or approximately 63% of the general fund budget. Commodities and other supplies, 8.7 million. We do have capital outlay, 1.7 million within the general fund. And then we transfer, and this is the levy support to the street and infrastructure replacement program, 3 million, 971,000. So of the property tax levy, the general fund collects 3 million, 971,000 will go to support the annual street and infrastructure replacement program. And then we also have transfers to our municipal building fund, 381,000 of the general fund levy, 381,000 would go to the three separate municipal building funds. Look on the revenue side for the general fund. Of the budget of 40 million, 432,000, approximately 74% is paid for by property taxes. And this just gives you all the other fees and charges. And again, intergovernmental revenue within the general fund, 3.4%. License and permits, that's building permits and business licensing, 4.9%. We do receive some franchise fees for cable that go into the general fund, 1.3%. And then everything else. We look at the property tax levy. Again, the focus of this evening's meeting is the property tax levy and the operating budget. Property tax levy is increasing 2.2 million, 214,000, approximately 7.4% to 32 million, 39,000 for the coming year. We can see the components that make up that. The general fund support goes up 1.3 million, five and a half percent. We can see that we increased the levy for the, for the street maintenance program. And then the facilities funds, the municipal building funds, we have the three of those that's going up 177% or 177,000, 86%. And then the debt service voter approved is our park bonds. And then all other, in this case, the only other debt we have that is not referendum voter approved is our capital improvement bonds. And this assumes issue yet this year, which the debt service on that is estimated to go up about 500,000. So altogether, 2.2 million, 2 million, 214,000 increase, again, 7.4%. Some of, you know, the levy increase drivers, what is resulting in the increase, and these are just larger pieces, of course, of the 2 million, 214,000, the increased transfer of the road and municipal building fund, 170,000. The new facilities, municipal building funds, facilities funds, 177,000. Increased debt service, and this would be the new capital improvement bonds with the first issue being paid in 2023. And again, these three are just for increased capital needs. This is the investment back into our capital facilities, 847,000. And some of the other items, we got an increase in the voter approved debt service, 31,000. We got increases due to the upcoming general election, approximately 187,000. This will be the, this will be the special election next year in 2023. COLA and STEP increases, 539,000. We did experience a significant increase in our workers comp rates last year, which comes to effect in the coming year, 321,000 for that. We do have three new positions. We'll look at that in a moment. But 98,000 of that is levy supported. Those would be police positions in this case. And then, of course, motor fuel and natural gas utilities up about 166,000. And then this year, we, there is an increase in the shade tree management program, which is Emerald Dashwater. We did receive a grant, but that program is going up 115,000. And we have other costs. This is just the increase. And we do have a grant for 138,000 to help address some of the Emerald Dashwater costs. One of the things we do all through the process is we compare what is our levy doing, what is the increase as it compares to other cities that we typically compare ourselves to. We see that Eden Prairie currently for their preliminary levy, which is always subject to change, of course, their levy increase for the coming year approximately 4.4%, Maple Grove, 4.9%. And then all the way, you see that Apple Valley is 7.4%. And we're, I'll say in the top third. Typically, we've historically been in the bottom third, but this coming year, we're in the top third. Burnsville, 14.5% currently, again, their preliminary levy, which may change. Lakeville, 12.4%. And Bloomington is currently at 11.6%. And again, these are all subject to change once they adopt their certified levy come December. One of the, one of the other things to help put our levy increase into perspective, I guess, would be taking a look at a multi-year. So I went back to 2016, well, 16 through 2022, and I took a look at the average increase or the total increase over those seven years, and then averaged it over that seven years. And we can see that Apple Valley, our average over the last seven years, leverage increase is 3.3%. And again, these are certified actual levies for 2022, so it doesn't include the 23 levies. So Apple Valley's second lowest in this comparison at 3.3%. Maple Grove, 2.5%. We always say that there's a story behind every number. You look at Blaine, oh, Blaine, property taxes are so high. Well, they're going through extraordinary growth up there. Of course, their levy is likely to change. So that's kind of what we see there. Another comparison that I like to do is the property taxes, estimated property taxes, and this is a city share only, on a median value home in each of the communities. And these are the only folks that have responded so far. People are waiting till later in September when they adopt their preliminary levy before they're going to release their, their numbers to, to us, I guess. We can see that Minnetoka, in this chart will show you the tax rate. So for Minnetoka, 33.9% is their tax rate applied to a median value home of 468,500 would result in a city portion of the taxes in Minnetoka of $1,600. Do the same exercise for each of the communities. We can see that Eden Prairie, they have a higher median value home, 513,000. Their tax rate's a little bit lower, but they still result in a higher tax bill for the median value home in each community. They would be towards the top. And again, these are the preliminary 2023 levies and resulting tax rates for each of these communities for those that, for those that have shared anyway so far. And of course, once we get to December, we'll have firmer numbers. But we can see that Apple Valley, again, their tax rate, 35.23% is a decline, but our median value home went up in value. So it will result in a tax bill of the city portion of taxes, 1,274 for the coming year. And then we always like to point out that our levy also includes the support of the street and infrastructure replacement program. So we just saw what that was. So not, well, none of these other cities, they all assess some portions of their street and infrastructure replacement program. Apple Valley takes care of all that through the property taxes and utility rates. We do, there's been a lot of talk about tax rates that have gone down. Oh, where have tax rates been going down? As the values go up, the tax rates will go down. That's just the way the math works. We can see that our tax rate will be the lowest since 2008. So we can see that as the values declined from 2008 to 2012, the tax rate went up, and then it's been coming down ever since. And we see a bigger drop this year because of the larger increase than normal. But just as you hear from other communities talking about tax rates, that's just one of the variables in the calculation. Another comparison we like to do is just check in. And these are total governmental fund expenditures as reported to the state auditor. Apple Valley, where total governmental fund expenditures per capita, $806 per capita is the lowest of these Dakota County cities, of the larger Dakota County cities. So just to help put our spending in check, what, how is our spending compared to others? I mentioned the capital improvement bonds. And again, these are actual expenditures as reported for 2020 to the state auditor. So as we build more and more capital and replace replacements at the fire hall and CMF projects, our expenditures per capita will, will increase. That's just, again, how the math works. Do the same comparison with some of the larger cities in the MLC group. We can see our $806 per capita is the lowest of these, of these cities for 2020, for the year 2020. And again, same for 2019. But as we, as we mentioned, the, our expenditures per capita will be changing as we, as we develop, or as we issue the capital improvement bonds and do the actual construction. One of the things we like to do, or I like to do anyway, is a sample calculation of the city portion of the taxes, just to help people understand how the tax rate helps, is a variable within the tax calculation. Mentioned the average median value home, 352,800. We do have a market value exclusion. So as every, every property starts with a maximum exclusion, it's 76,000 of value. And then as your value goes up, it phases out. So the median value home will receive a market value exclusion of 5,488, resulting in a taxable market value of 347,312. I just want to point out that the market value homestead exclusion, market value exclusion phases out at approximately 414,000. So you take the taxable market value times 1% for the residential property classes, gives you a variable that's called tax capacity. And it's that number that the tax rate is applied to, that gives you your gross taxes paid. In our case, 1,224. And then we have referendum bonds, which are not based on tax capacity, based on market value. So that adds 50, $50. So resulting in the property tax dollars paid for the city portion of the taxes only, 1,274 for the median value home. And again, same calculation comparing to the prior year. The city portion of the tax of last year, 1,116 dollars, or 1,164 dollars with the referendum. The coming year, 1,274 dollars, an increase of 110 dollars, approximately 9.45%. And again, this is the median value home, 352,800, that experienced a 16.7% That experienced a sixteen point seven percent increase in the value for taxes payable two thousand and twenty-three. And again, we saw that the market value exclusion, the phase out of the market value exclusion will result in a taxable market value increase for this median value home of eighteen point eight-eight percent for the coming year. So we can see that the large increase in market value resulted in our tax extension rate, or our tax rate, dropping from thirty-eight point one eight to thirty-five point two-three for the coming year. Some of the, some of the impacts in the twenty-three, twenty, two thousand and twenty-three budget. We've got a significant shift in the property tax burden to residential properties. Residential valuations, including apartments, increase significantly greater than our commercial valuation increases. That, just the way the formulas work, will result in a shift. The new CIP bond debt service, approximately five hundred thousand, will result in a twenty-three dollar impact for the median pay home. That is included in that increase of one hundred and ten dollars. We've got the two thousand and twenty-three election costs, the workers' comp rate impacts that we mentioned, the new facilities funds. We had one fund, we just split it into three funds just to track them independently, I guess. And then, of course, all other inflationary impacts, you know, which is, depending on which index you look at, is somewhere between eight and nine percent. So our levy increase of seven point four percent is certainly within line of that inflationary index. Some of the other items, mentioned the increase of seven point four percent in the levy. Medium value home, again, increased sixteen point seven percent. The tax impact of the median value home is going up one hundred and ten dollars per year, approximately nine dollars, seventeen cents a month, or nine point four five percent. This does result in a loss in the market values collusion with the phase out. And in the impact of that within the tax bill increase in that one hundred and ten dollar increase, sixteen dollars of that is just related to the phase out of the market value exclusion program for that median value home. Our utility rates, and this would be based on just a typical user, water and sewer, the way the budget is standing today, are increasing at five percent, which is consistent with the last three or four years. Stormwater rate is going up ten percent, approximately two dollars, sixty-one cents per quarter, eighty-seven cents a month. And then the streetlights are going up ten percent, approximately sixty-three. Altogether, the utility rates on average would go up approximately five point eight percent, twelve dollars per quarter, four dollars per month in the utility rates bill for a typical user. Some of the other items, we did increase the pavement management levy, one hundred and seventy thousand. We increased the transfer of the facilities funds, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Of course, both of these items are additional capital investments. The liquor, on the liquor fund, we do have their revenue, budgeted revenues. The increases are moderating following the pandemic. And frankly, we're going back to pre-pandemic levels. The two thousand and twenty-two projected sales will be approximately four point eight percent lower than what we budgeted for twenty-two. And again, that was based on what we were experiencing during the pandemic. It is still higher than the pre-pandemic, six percent higher than the pre, pre-pandemic revenues, actual revenues for two thousand and nineteen. And then the two thousand and twenty-three budgeted sales are approximately two point four percent higher than projected two thousand and twenty-two. In the, on the waters, on this utility side of things, capital outlay is up two hundred and twelve thousand. And within the fund, just the share of the utility portion of this, the street infrastructure replacement program, that increase is just four hundred and ninety-four thousand of that, just for the utilities. New position for the coming year, we have the police officer and a police investigative crime analyst and then an assistant city engineer. The police officer and the police investigative aid, crime analyst are supported by property tax dollars within the police operating budget. The assistant engineer would be offset by engineering revenues within the engineering budget. Capital outlay is down two million to sixteen point two million, which is still a significant number of that. The road fund is down one point eight million, which is all based on the street projects in whichever year. Vehicle replacement fund expenditures themselves are down one point two million. And again, this is related to last year included a fire truck at, over a million dollars for the one truck. So that will bounce, the expenditure side will bounce around each year as the expenditures occur. We do have some American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds that are contemplated to be used in the budgeted funds, including one point five million for one hundred and thirty-third street, up for one hundred and forty-three thousand for support to the police community impact unit, and then forty-one thousand for a IT security audit that'll occur in two thousand and twenty-three as well. Some of the major items that residents may be interested in hearing about, I guess, is the street maintenance program will be up in the Walnut Lane, Helm Drive to Park Lane area, one hundred and forty-second from Cedar to Galaxy, one hundred and fifty-seventh street from Cedar to Galaxy, and then Hayes Road, one hundred and fiftieth to one hundred and fortieth street. So significant ten point two million for the street program the coming year. And then, of course, citywide intersection improvements that they do each year. We talked about the Emerald Dashwater response. That continues and it's growing each, each year. We've got various equipment, police cars, fire pickups, street mowers, parks and streets, pickups and mowers. We got some storm pond improvements, new sound system at the Hayes Arena, some ceiling fans at the community center, and then some flooring in the meeting room flooring and restroom flooring at the senior center. So trying to keep some, incurring some investment back into each of those facilities. Again, the residential property taxes are set to rise for, based on the two thousand and twenty-three levy, approximately nine point four percent, one hundred and ten dollars per year, nine dollars and seventeen cents per month. And again, for the median value home of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred. And that'll be increasing from eleven hundred and sixty-four to twelve hundred and seventy-four. And twenty-three dollars of that increases, the new capital improvement bond debt service. And we saw the market value exclusion of sixteen dollar impact. Continues the city council goal to not specially assess for the infrastructure maintenance program. And again, we have two thousand and twenty-three levy support of three million, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, an increase of approximately four and a half percent for the coming year. And we mentioned the three positions, police officer, police investigative crime analyst, and the assistant city engineer. The timeline remaining is, the action this evening includes setting the budget meeting date for December eighth. The county will then take the levy that is certified this evening and prepare their parcel-specific notices of taxes payable in the coming year. They're typically sent the second or third week of November, identifying the property owners of the hearing dates. And then, of course, we would then hold the TNT, our truth and taxation meeting on December eighth at seven PM is what we're proposing. And then either at that date or a backup date, if the council doesn't complete it that evening, we would need to adopt the final budget and final tax levy so that we can certify it to the county auditor prior to year end. The action this evening is the resolution adopting the two thousand and twenty-three proposed budget and property tax levy. And then a separate motion to set December eighth as the truth and taxation meeting.
Give breath, drink of water. Questions for Ron? Yeah, we've all seen this before at an informal, not, I don't know, it wasn't all that long ago that you went through this in great detail. And the changes between now and then were really pretty minor ones related to market value changes in the, in the Lake. Any questions or comments for, for Ron? We're certainly not immune to the impacts of inflation in our budget as well. You saw fuel in there, you saw labor costs. Any of us trying to do a business outside of here, also seen all those same pieces. Thank you for pulling that multi-year trend slide in. I know we talked about that one last time. It's kind of good. One year tells you one thing. I think a longer view tells you a, a little more complete story. Do you recall, Ron, did we get anywhere legislature this year with market value exclusion changes? I think that died with many other things. Do you recall, Tom or Ron?
Mr. Mayor, an answer to the question, because there was no tax bill this year, any changes to that program were not enacted. Certainly is a policy priority of the Lake and Minnesota Cities this coming year to up that amount at which the market value homestead exclusion goes away. So instead of four hundred and thirteen, four hundred and fourteen thousand, we're hoping that number will go up. So more of our residents will see benefit to that program.
So about, yeah, a little better than ten percent of the increase we saw here on the median value home was due to the fact that number has not been indexed to inflation since it was put into, into legislation. So again, that sixteen percent value increase feels good, but you lost some exclusion in there in the process.
That's correct.
If there are no other questions, Ron, I believe you're looking for, Tom, you have something.
Well, I just want to point out, and this is something that people watching should know. We have what we call a median price home in this community. Now, that's the home right in the middle. Half the homes are more, have higher assessed values than three fifty-three, half, half lower. On that median priced home, the property tax, the city share of property tax is going to go up nine dollars a month. Now, with, with all the inflation that's out there, that we don't have any control over, that certainly looks like a reasonable number to me.
Other questions or comments? If not, we're looking for a motion to adopt the resolution approving the proposed two thousand and twenty-three city budget and tax levy.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Goodwin, a second from Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. But we're also looking for a motion to set a date for the public budget meeting on December eighth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven PM.
Come on.
Second.
Motion from Grendal, a second from Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 And opposed, both of those items in five B carry unanimously. We'll move on to five C, which is the truth and taxation insert.
All right. Thanks again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Past number of years, we've included additional information that is distributed with the county estimate of property taxes payable in the coming year. We just wanted to take a quick look at that. This year, there is something new. It's a county-wide budget information. It's a one-page budget summary. It includes the county, the school district, and the city all on one page. And then again, we'll look at our supplemental info, which would be similar to what we've done in the prior years. This is an overview of the supplemental, supplemental budget information that the county will be sending out. And the format is mandated by the state. We can see that there's two areas that, that apply to the city. Tried to highlight them in yellow and circle them, highlight them in red. Is our total levy and then our, on the summary budget info on the right side, is our total budget. And again, this is governmental funds only on the, on the right-hand side. We just kind of drill into that. And I did take the form and fit our budget in there. There are some different reporting categories than how we actually do our budgeting, so it takes a little bit of adjustment there. But on the property tax side, this, this, well, this is property taxes. Then we have special assessments, which we do have some minor amounts. We have state general purpose aid, which for us is nominal amount, seven thousand five hundred. And then we have state categorical aid. What this is, is money from the state of Minnesota that can only be used for a specific purpose. Biggest example of that would be our municipal state aid for, for streets. Another example would be the fire relief aid that we get. That would be included in that number as well as police, police pension aid that we do receive as well. We can see that there is an increase in the state categorical aid of sixty-three point two percent for the coming year. Again, this is the increase in the municipal state aid. And it's, will vary from year to year depending on which projects we're doing. So we have some larger projects coming next year, which will, is expected to, the state's share of those projects are expected to increase. And then all other revenues make up the other, reduction of eleven point four percent, but seventeen million for the coming year compared to seventeen, nineteen point four million the prior year. On the expenditure side, this is a little bit different. The, you know, we have our general government, public safety, street highways, you know, that's all normal stuff for us. The one thing to point out on these expenditures is they don't include certain things. They, again, are just governmental funds, so it doesn't include any of the utilities and the enterprise funds. It's current expenses only, so it doesn't include capital outlay, which for us is nine point one million in the coming year versus nine point eight million last year. It doesn't include any debt service expenditures, payments. And then I, one of the other things that I noticed that doesn't do is it, even, even for the limited numbers that they're asking for, it doesn't give you a total to put it all in perspective. And again, that won't be on the form. I added it at the bottom. So our current governmental funds, current expenses would go from thirty-five point four million to thirty-seven point five million in the coming year, approximately six percent. And again, doesn't include capital outlay, doesn't include debt service. It does include governmental funds, so it'll include just, not just the general fund, but all the other miscellaneous funds that aren't enterprise funds that we do budget. And so when the state pulls all this together and starts comparing it to other cities, it's going to be a very odd, odd comparison. And I do expect changes in the format for certain.
Ron, before you move on, Councilmember Goodwin has a question or a comment.
Boy, in God's name, did the county do this.
Oh, it's, it's not the county-driven. This is a state.
State-driven.
State-driven, really.
You know what people want to know? What I said earlier. How much are my taxes going up on my house? That's all they want to know. And the median home price home is nine dollars a month. And I think, as I said earlier, with all the inflation going on, I think it's reasonable. Why they're putting all this crap in there is, is, I don't understand it. Do they think the average citizen's going to look at this and say, oh, now I understand what's going on? Baloney. But, but, but it's not county-driven, it's state-driven.
Yeah, and the, the, the format of the form itself, which, this is the whole form, it's all on one page.
What the hell does this mean to anybody?
It, it will be difficult for people to make sense of it, in my opinion, I guess.
I think it's, it's difficult for the average financier, I guess.
He's not average.
No, see, it's ridiculous. People want to know, they get their truth and taxation statement, they want to know one thing, how much are their property taxes go up? That's all they care about. All this other crap is just ridiculous.
Ron, would you, would John's on here, would you go back to the Apple Valley example? So for those cities who still receive LGA, is that under the state general purpose aid? Do you know?
Yes.
Is that, so that does show up? You know, we've done a handful of things in my dozen or so years here to kind of even out budgets. You know, one of them, we talked about earlier, the VERF, the facilities funds, you know, those kind of things, where we're, we're essentially setting some money aside in our budgets to take care of some future things rather than bonding for everything. Is that expenditure showing up somewhere in here? Because what I don't see is expenditure in here for debt service.
It does not include debt service. It also does not include capital outlay. So it does include, and frankly, this is the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, the VERF charge to the operating. That is exactly why I titled this draft, because I'm still.
Because I just, yeah, we're not too, you know, we've got a whole story here, right? If you, if somebody is so inclined to pick up the whole story and figure out where the nickels and dimes are going and how we're doing those. And in some attempt to summarize this, we're not telling the story about how we might be.
Correct.
Doing things more fiscally responsibly than not knowing what we've done over the years.
So the, the VERF charge, the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Charge, is included in the operating expenditure line. So there's a piece in public safety for police and fires piece, and parks for their piece, and streets for their piece. And there's a little piece for general government. So it's included in those, in those numbers. So it's included in those, in those numbers. What I mentioned, it is governmental funds only. I don't want to get too far in the weeds here, but the, when we actually, we transfer the money to an internal service fund who actually makes the purchase. So we budget that, but the internal service fund is not included on this form, which again is, there's nothing, it's, again, the parameters are defined by the state.
We've introduced lots of opportunities to play games with the numbers to tell your story differently, it fills, so.
It's going to be an interesting process to see how it plays out. I did take the opportunity to talk to a couple finance directors of some of the cities we'd like to compare ourselves to, and we do, they're reporting differently than we are. They're including, they're going to include debt service, and they're going to include capital outlay. The other one, well, we only budget, we're only including the general fund even though we budget the other ones. So I, it's going to be difficult to see how this all plays out.
It's a joke.
All right, let's move on.
Anyway, moving on. I titled this our, let's call it our normal city supplemental budget insert. This is very similar language to what we used, and our focus really is on the capital expenditure side of things. Again, summarizing much of the information that we heard this evening, laying out the total levy for the property taxpayers, providing a phone number for folks to call me if they want to chat, I'm happy to do it. And then on the backside, and again, we're allowed a one-third of a sheet of paper, but we get to use both sides. So on the backside, we break out the share of the annual property tax bill by functional area. So it's got the police of the tax bill, $1,274, approximately $398 would go to support the police department, and you can see each of the programs. And again, we'd like to point out that of, on the median value home, of the tax, city portion of the taxes, $1,274, this street and infrastructure replacement program would make up $144 of that 1,274. So a significant portion of our tax, taxes that our property taxpayers pay go to support that portion of the budget as well. And again, that's what we're proposing to include this coming year as well. The unfortunate part is you'll have the estimate of taxes paid, you have the countywide summary data, you'll have our insert, and then if the county and school do one, so there'll be more pieces in that envelope.
It's a joke.
This has always been the very end.
It's a bad joke.
So anyway, there, no real action to take on that, but we just want to bring you up to beat on what we're intending to do.
So the, it does look like there is an action to approve the insert, correct?
Okay.
At least that's what my agenda says, and so let's just be safe and take a motion from Goodwin and a second from Grendal and approve the insert. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. Ron, thanks to you, and honestly, everyone who jumped in on this budget. This process starts back in the spring with a goal-setting session with council, and that kind of sets direction, and we move through here, so this is not a short process. It can't be short and generate that amount of work. So thanks, Ron, for wrangling, and every staff member who contributed. With that, we'll move on to item five on the regular agenda, or 5D, excuse me, which is the Woodwinds eighth edition. Now I follow you. This should have been an item, yeah.
Can I make a comment? This is an opinion that I have and I've seen, and again, to the next applicant that has come before us after this long presentation, which is very important to the city of Apple Valley. I feel that from now on, for direction, that when we have applicants come before us that have a project like is before us today or anything else, that they get to come before us before the long rendition of the tax, truth and taxation statement. I would appreciate that. So, Mr. McNerney, I apologize on behalf of myself and the staff for making you wait through this process. We usually circumvent so people can get, come and go in this process.
Did you learn anything? I did.
There'll be a quiz.
Yeah, there'll be a quiz later.
All right.
So, thank you.
Alex, why don't you come on up and we'll get through this item?
That's a good idea, John.
Although there could be less questions for him, we're just tired of him through that, so we'll see how it goes.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Ron's a hard one to follow. As stated, this is a preliminary plat for Woodwinds eighth edition. There are two actions requested this evening. The first is to approve a subdivision by preliminary plat for six single-family lots. The second is a design agreement to design the cul-de-sac that is associated with this project. Site is located in northeast corner of Pilot Knob and 140th. It is located at 5297 140th Street and is 2.97 acres. In 1993, it was platted as an outlot along with the surrounding Woodwinds neighborhood, which is in that area at the northeast of 140th and Pilot Knob. I'm sorry, the mouse is not cooperating.
Ron, you still have batteries in it, that's what happened.
I'll try that.
There we go. Sorry.
Goes to Bruce, lives on.
This site, thank you for that. The site is zoned residential cluster. The cluster development is based upon the R3, our most prominent zoning district. Residential cluster does allow for additional density with certain provisions, however, this development is not proposing to utilize those provisions. They are, in fact, less dense than the surrounding neighborhood. This is an area of the site. It is a heavily wooded site with a single-family home existing on it. It is not served by city water and sewer currently. It actually has a capped well and septic system. Right now, access is off of 140th, however, an access restriction easement was approved in 1993 along with the Woodwinds Association. So access for this development will be off of Ember Way, and that driveway onto 140th will be closed. The public hearing was held on April 20th, 2022. There were two primary comments, the first being about the homeowners association. The neighborhood was seeking the developer to participate in the Woodwinds homeowners association. The staff comments at the time were, and are consistent with today. The city is not party to that, however, the developer has stated their intention for the homes to join the association. The second comment was on migratory birds primarily. Staff contacted the Minnesota DNR and determined that there are no requirements particularly for a lot of this size. However, the recommendation was that tree removal begin in either late fall or early spring, as the migratory birds should be through the site at that time. That is consistent with the developer's timeline of this fall. In addition, it's not a public hearing comment, but wanted to note that because this is an older home, staff did reach out to the Dakota County Historical Society, and there was no historical significance found. This is the preliminary plat. It is a subdivision of the 2.97 acre lot into six single-family lots. The design of the cul-de-sac is part of the actions this evening. City engineering will begin on that design shortly after city council would approve. And as noted, the homes gain their access off of Ember Way and subsequently what will be Ember Court. One item of note is that there will be sidewalk associated with this cul-de-sac that is consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan and other city developments. That will require in the northeast side, three homes to have sidewalk that do not existing, but that will allow the connection up to the existing sidewalk onto Essex Way. The city would be responsible for this sidewalk gap, while the developer would be responsible for any sidewalk on this property. As noted, the site is heavily wooded. A tree survey was done with the site. There are a number of high-quality trees, however, there are an equal number, or more so, I should actually say, of kind of a scrub or at-will tree that have come up in the time that the property has not been maintained. Additionally, trees which are of danger, which you can note in some of the red areas, will be removed as part of the project, whether they are within the project area or not, as they often present dangers to neighboring homes. The tree replacement plan is based upon ordinance, so the caliper inches is actually slightly above what the city requires. Primary reason why I'm noting it here is it is focused on the Ember Way and 140th sections, as that is where the primary difference that the passerby will see at the site. This allows for that kind of more vegetated feeling to come back in time. You won't have quite the same vegetation as many of the existing vegetation is buckthorn or things like box elder. The large delay that occurred between the planning commission's initial review in April and their action in August was due to the applicant working with the neighborhood association to determine whether a pond could extend onto their association property to the east. The current design does not require that, but does a three-tier system. City engineer has stated that this is actually a significant improvement from existing conditions. I also want to note that some water will go onto that association property. A condition within the resolution is that the developer provide a easement to allow for that 100-year rain event to overflow onto that property. It should not be common, and the developer is currently working on that easement that will come forward to the final plat. With that, the actions before you were presented this evening, if there are any questions.
Questions for Alex.
I would make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion from Goodwin, a second from Bergman. Before I take the vote, just a question on the sidewalks. So we're adding sidewalk in front of three homes that have not been there before. Has that been reviewed with neighbors? Are they good with that? I'm assuming that becomes their responsibility then to maintain that sidewalk throughout the winter, and it just suddenly showed up there with that?
That is correct, Mayor. We did, with the public hearing notice, that did go out, as did the diagram of the sidewalks. Two of the three homes had been for sale recently. So I've spoken with a potential buyer that unfortunately fell through. She was very in favor of the sidewalk. I have not been able to speak with all of them yet.
It's been out there, and I guess that's my, suddenly.
It's been out since April with the public hearing.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. Councilmember Goodwin, did you have something else?
The Woodwinds is a beautiful development. What we're doing, cutting a few trees down, but we're adding six more beautiful homes to a beautiful development. I always get a kick out of this stuff. I mean, we go on for months and months with this crap, and that's what we're doing. We're adding six more high-valued homes to a development that's full of high-valued homes. Everybody should be happy.
Mayor, Councilmember Goodwin, I do have diagrams of the home if you'd like to see as well. They're consistent with the existing.
I'm going through the process.
You're not going to build some dump up there.
All right, we've got a motion from Goodwin and a second from Bergman, I believe. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And just to be clear, that was for D1 and 2, correct, council member?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect. So we've taken care of both items in 5D1 and 2. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Welcome. And thanks for sitting through the budget. We hope you learned at least one something. Let's see, we have staff and council communications. Tom, do we have anything from staff this evening?
Mr. Mayor, just one, a quick one, just for people's planning purposes. Hard to believe, but Fall Cleanup Day is right around the corner, and this is an event that many in the community look forward to. It's a chance to clean out the garage or the basement and have a good spot where that can be taken to and disposed of. It will be on Saturday, September the 24th, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and being held again at the Apple Valley Family Aquatic Center. So I would encourage people to check out the city's website for more details about the type of items that can be brought. There is a fee for most items to be disposed of. There are some that are not, that are free. So people look forward to this every year, and mark your calendars for September 24th.
Thanks, Tom. As I recall correctly, the longest line of the day is at 7:45 in the morning until about 8:30, and then it clears out, so maybe get your coffee on the way over instead of lining up first. So, councilmembers, are there any items this evening? Councilmember Grendal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might just want to mention what I brought up at the informal. As of today, live on our website is many of our sustainable initiatives. And one thing that I, I think we're going to maybe have a presentation down the road, but the Minnesota League of Cities recognized us at June 14th this year, officially recognized as a Step 5 Green Step City, and it's the highest recognition level possible under the program. So hopefully we can do a little more education on everything that we're doing out there to achieve that level.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, we will move on to the calendar of upcoming events. The next regular city council meeting is Thursday, September 22nd at 7:00 PM. I would look for a motion to approve the calendar.
So moved.
Motion from Grendal, a second from Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, and we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from Bergman, a second from Melander. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Everybody have a great evening. Thank you.